We'd like to welcome you to our benefits meeting, our final meeting of 2017. And we welcome our guests who are going to start things off, which is Dean and Bill. And Matt will be joining us shortly. He's in transit. That'd be great. They are our new firm working with us on health benefits, Cottingham and Butler, also known as C and B. So we are glad you're here to help us with a presentation of what we're working on. Floor is yours.
Yeah. Thank you. First, thank you for doing business with Cottingham and Butler. We've had some exciting conversations, as exciting as insurance can be with your team. And so we got some good information to show you here as a, as a foundation to move forward with the district. So as I go through this, and if I understand right, we're about a 30-minute time slot, correct? So we got about 30 slides to go through. I'm going to spend time on ones that I feel are a little bit more urgent for you to understand. So one of the things we start with at C and B is really to get an understanding of how costs get derived in a, in a health plan. And so when you're looking at, you used to have a self-funded health plan, you would look at claims. Now you're on a fully insured, so we're really looking at premiums. But when you look at the reporting, what you're really trying to do is claims drive the cost of the health plan. So in a fully insured, there's a little bit more limitation in the, in the reporting that you get. And I'll just give you a little example, right? So when you buy an HMO plan, part of what they do is they own their own physicians. So they do this thing called capitation. It means if Dean doesn't go to the doctor at all this year, the doctor I pick still gets paid. It's called capitation. There's just a fee. Now, if Dean goes to the doctor a ton, he still gets that same fee. She still gets that same fee. So as we go, if I use words that don't make sense in terms of mere vernacular on a daily basis, let me know. But the big thing is, we're looking at non-medical cost, accounting for about 10% of the overall premiums. That's what you pay people to pay claims, the reinsurance, the reserves, things like that. And then capitation is really difficult to truly calculate, but we're going to make some assumptions there for you. So as we go through it, the data we use for the project, we're going to compare it to state and local government and Wisconsin benchmarks. So two things. Benchmarks are averages, right? And I, my college basketball coach told me averages are the best of the worst and the worst of the best. But we're going to start there as a way that we look at things because I think it really gives you some key performance metrics. When we get into diving into the detail, we're really going to try to benchmark you against high performance, not just average. So that's really some background about what, what you're going to see it against. If we go to the next slide, we believe that the more you understand, and it's fun when we're in a school district, because obviously, school districts are here for education. So we believe the best clients understand what's going on. So we try to help your professional team develop so that they can stay ahead rather than just behind. So there's some things that we offer at C and B, webinars, seminars, peer group opportunities, that really allow your team to learn about some emerging technologies, some emerging things, also to just make sure they're on top of their game with regards to their professional education. So we offer some webinars, seminars. Your team has been on several of them already. And then some of the peer group opportunities, what we do is we try to bring people that do the same job in different businesses, in different districts, in different locales together, to really create a best practice opportunity. So the peer group opportunities seem to be the ones that our, our clients like the best.
So a question would be, these, some of these are for our staff in the, in the central office, some are for people in the buildings, correct?
Most, yes, we have education for both. The ones we're talking about here is really for your professional staff that's taking care of the benefits, to educate the leadership of the benefit plan.
Do you, do you keep a standard calendar? Or do you help us drive a standard calendar so that we make sure we hit dates that are key dates?
Yes, we have worked together with your team to put a whole, really, we, we logged into a 15-month calendar when we started the engagement, so that we have key dates of what we have to have done by when. So get the education, understanding, then have the dialogue and determination, then you go to implementation. So yes.
And then you'll help us build out that similar calendar for our employee groups.
Correct, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So here, I was really good at math, and a lot of people struggled with math once they added letters. So what we're going to give you here, this is something you can go back to, but it's really the equation for how we look at things. There's eight, six, whatever key functions that you're going to look at that we're going to evaluate and give you an idea how your plan stacks up. Now, when you look at it, we're going to use variances in this. So it's going to say like a negative, and a lot of people will look at it and go, ooh, that's where we're bad. So I don't want you to think negative is bad and positive is good yet. And I don't want you to think red is bad and green is good. We use those as colors to get your attention on variations, and we want you to understand why you make those variations, why you made the decision about that variation. I'm going to give you an example before we get into it. One of the things we're going to look at is the participation rate. In technology today, if you're in the technology industry, there's 0% unemployment, zero. So how do you, how do you compete for people? Well, you raise the wages, right? Okay, now we all got high wages. Now what's the next thing? Well, a lot of them are looking at their coverage of dependents. They try to get people to come to them and stay with them, so they offer benefits. And when we look at that, that's going to show red on our thing. It's going to be a minus. But it was a conscious, conscious decision by those people in that group to make that. They know what that is costing them by that decision. And that's what we try to do with the, with the, with your group as we go through this. Did we make this decision on purpose? Or are we, are we here because things just sort of got here? So that's really what we're looking at here. So Matt finally got through traffic, so welcome, Matt. So the participation rate, so when you look at participation rate, really what you're looking at here is how many people do you cover? And against the benchmark, most people cover about 90%. You guys cover about 96.5%. So when we look at that and we said, hey, if you operated at benchmark, what would the plan cost you? It would have cost you about a million one, million two less, okay? And so as I go through these, I'm going to go through these a little quick. You'll see on every single one, up in the right-hand corner, you'll have some ideas of why it's where it is, and then some of the ideas on how you reduce that. So as we work with you, we're going to go through each of these with your team in more depth. But it's really, you know, for an example on this, when you restrict the, the plan eligibility through plan design, you might do some things to restrict from dependents coming on, things like that. So that's really what this is about, okay? Any questions on this one? All right, we'll go to the next one. This is the dependent ratio. So when you have an employee, how many extra belly buttons do you get when you bring that employee on your plan? The average benchmark is at two and a quarter, and you're a little shy of 2.7, right? So you're bringing almost a half a body more on. What does that cost you? Roughly about $3 million, okay? So again, sometimes we've made those decisions on purpose, right? So we'll talk to some people in public spaces, and they'll say, we can't be at the top end of the wage scale, so we got to be at the top end of the benefit scale, okay? What does that cost you? Would you be better off offering more in wage and you'd get a lower cost overall? So these are the things we're going to dive in. When I learned the business, the guy who taught it to me, and I grew up on a farm, said, healthcare is hydraulic, right? So as I learned hydraulics on the farm, is if you push something down here, what happens? You get to lift something up over here. So what we're going to try to do with all these is figure out, when we're pushing somewhere, where does it come up? Are you okay with where it came up? And, and so this is the two that really talk about how many people you're covering, you know? How many people choose to take it when you offer it? And then when they take it, how many people do they bring? It's the key metric to figure out the cost of, okay? All right, we're going to go to consumption, right? So we talked about how many people aren't on the plan, and we're going to go to consumption. So if we look at the next slide, it's really about member demographics. We're at 1.03 versus 1. It's about a $600,000 difference. This is based on the demographics of your population, right? It's really, how old are we? Are we male, female? It's really a health metric. So the HR people in the room really can't do anything about this one, right? We are who we are, right? If we said, hey, let's, let's, let's have a youth hiring spree, that's not okay, right? We can't do that stuff. So this is really just reflective, because when we look at the cost of a health plan, it's really reflective of the demographics in there. People say, how important is this one? If I had all of the claims that the school district had for the last five years, but I don't have any of the demographic information, I can't give you a proposal. Yet if you give me only the demographics and none of the claim information, I can give you a proposal. That's how important it is. It's important to understand where you start from, because it's the, it's the basis of where all of the rates start. Does that make sense? Okay. Matt, you can take over if you want, or you can let the Dutch guy keep going. I'll take this one, and then I'll let Matt grab it. So when you look at the demographically adjusted medical claims per member, you guys are doing really well here, which, when you look at it, this is a positive variation. It generally says, if you look at the average age, what's the claims that you have versus somebody else with the same demographics? You're doing much better here. So will Matt go from here, and I'll just add commentary, so.
Sounds good. Thanks for, you know, allowing me a couple minutes lead time on there. The traffic from Milwaukee is not necessarily the best. So one of the things that we want to do on here, when we're looking at this, these two next metrics, one is for the medical claims, the next one's going to be on RX, is look at it based on the actual claim dollars that were reported through both Mercy Care and Dean Health Plan. So we didn't want to do it on a premium equivalent of what that cost is. We really wanted to do it on a, what did they say the claims actually were on here, to kind of normalize that. So relatively close, within a couple points, is where we're seeing the medically adjusted claims per member. And then for RX, it's the same story. It's slightly below what the national average is, but it's still within line, within, you know, air of what we, what we would anticipate. And this is based off some assumptions, because Mercy Care doesn't necessarily provide the most in-depth reporting. We had to make some assumptions based on a breakdown percentage-wise of what Dean planned had for medical versus RX versus, you know, what we saw in other places too. So we see this continuing to rise to be a part of it, but this, those last two are based on actual or actual reported claim experience, not necessarily the, the premium equivalent. And that's an important thing on here, because the HMO strategy, in our opinion, is at this present time, really working for the district. So this is just a visualization of kind of what's happening. The first bar is, what is the school district claim cost? So you have, the whole thing is the premium, that's what you're, so, sorry. The, the claim cost is broken out by both employee, right, but medical and RX, for a total of around $6,000 per employee per year, all in. Does that make sense? That's the last two added together. But what you're paying in premium per employee per year is around $4,000. And what you see is the benchmark for your industry is a shade above $6,000. So what you're seeing is that the insurance companies, what you're paying for this benefit is way less than what the actual experience is. So this is, this HMO model, this fully insured model at the present time, is something that does benefit the school district very much. Another thing to keep in mind as we continue down this path, because just because something is good now does not mean it's going to be the best option down the road, right? And part of the reason I believe we were hired was to improve the school district's risk portfolio and risk spread to the point where we can look at alternate options. We're not just pigeonhole to a single opportunity. So one of the things that we're going to always be fighting against is the discount game. And I don't know how familiar you are with all this, but you know, we believe that an educated client is the best client. This is essentially what we're going to have to deal with. When you're fully insured and the, and the hospital system owns the insurance company, they give themselves the quote "best discounts." So something may come in, it's a $1,000 bill, and they'll give us, they'll give themselves a 60% discount, so the net paid claim, which is all we really care about is net paid, is $400. Now, if you use that same carrier, that same network, that same insurance company, but you're a self-funded entity within it, they're not going to give you the same discount. They're going to give their fully insured basis the same discount. So the next column says, all right, same $1,000 bill, but instead of a 60% discount, we're going to give it a 45% discount. So instead of paying 400, now what you're paying for the same price is 150 bucks higher. Where we start seeing this game really change is when we start getting to some of the PPOs. Think of PPOs like Anthem, United Healthcare, Humana. Their starting point's going to be a lot different. So a bill, a charge, a claim that might be $1,000, that they'll charge themselves and say, this is a $1,000 this, or transaction, they may say it's 1,300 bucks. And the reason they up-charge it is that, so they can go, well, we're going to give a 55% discount to this insurance company. Then the insurance company can go ahead and say, well, we get a 55% discount, we get the best discounts that there are, but it's a different, it's off of a different dollar amount, right? Who's shopped at Kohl's? Okay, we've all, so, so we're all, you know, we all understand this, right? Okay. So this is some of the things that we're going to be looking at when we're saying, what is the best way to fund the plan? And as we move forward, and we can address some of these risk things and get some stuff under consideration, that's, that's one of the items that we're obviously going to take into consideration. So right now, where we are, we think we're in a good spot with how we're funding it. There's just some other questions that we want to have on here. So the next two, or the last two metrics are really all about, how do we share the cost with the employees? Both on a premium basis as well as a cost-share basis, so the plan design. So these two things work in tandem, right? So you have to look at them both at the same time. You can't say, well, you know, we split this percent and you split that percent, so obviously, we're, if we're lower, we're a better cost. It depends, well, what is your out-of-pocket? What is the, what does the employee see in this? So that's what these are really meant to do. So health plan cost-sharing percentage, this is, what is the plan pickup? When somebody goes to the doctor to use the insurance, what percent on average is the plan pickup versus what do they pick up in terms of co-pays, deductibles, coinsurances? National average for state and local governments, it's about 85% actuarial value, which means that the plan will pick up 85% of every bill. The employee picks up about 15% when all, when it's all said and done. What we're seeing is that the plan that the school district is offering is covering just under 93% of the claims that go in, okay? So it's a richer plan. This is, I highlighted a, the last bullet point in the upper right-hand corner. This metric is a cultural metric. One of the things that we had heard during the process was, there is a want and desire to attract and retain talent. And this is one of those items that does it. And again, to point to Dean's point, the lower right-hand number that's got the negative or the positive is not saying, there's $2 million on the table here, let's grab it. That's not what that's about. But one of the questions that now we can answer, and that's the whole purpose of this whole thing, is this is a $2 million, call it an expense, it's not, but this is, you know, a $2 million benefit. And you can ask yourself, are we getting $2 million of value from offering this benefit? Does that make sense? Okay. So that's the first part of it. It's strictly plan design. How rich is the plan design? The second is health plan contribution. And this is, we take what total premium amount is to fund the entire plan, and then how much does the employee pick up? How much does the employer pick up? And, you know, just what we got out of this was, national average is about 82% the employer picks up. School district is just a shade under 92%, about 1.7 million. And again, highlighted it again, it's a cultural metric. So this, these, these are the items that help attract and retain talent. So you have a, the story out of this is, which you already know, you have a rich plan design that's affordable. So these are some of the items. Now, when it's all put together, because, you know, Dean pointed out, this is, this is hydraulics. They're not independent. When you can look at them all together, and I don't know if you can see it from here, this is just all of them on a single page. So you can look at them, how they operate together, but more than that, and I don't want you looking through there, there's, here's the visual that I really like on here. The savings opportunity after the interaction effect. So the interaction effect is kind of exactly what it sounds like. If you adjust the plan design, it may move people off the plan, which is going to reduce the opportunity when it comes to participation rate, dependent ratio, right? So this is trying to find that cause and effect. If we do this, there's a high likelihood that this is also going to happen, and we don't want to overstate that when it comes to potential. And again, a lot of this is potential. So what we start with is, what are the savings opportunities after the interaction effect? This is just the summary of all of it. With the participation rate, it's a little over a million bucks. The dependent ratio is, is the biggest one. There's, based on other government states' plans, a little over 500 dependents on there that are above the benchmark, okay? So you think about a 500-person company, that's a big employer. You know, and one of the items too, and, and this is not meant to be callous. This is not meant to be, you know, black and white on here. But one of the things that we've seen throughout the state, throughout the country over the last couple of years is employers have put in safeguards in their own plans to address dependents, not just necessarily the employees, but to address dependents, because their view is, are we as a big employer subsidizing other employers' responsibility for healthcare? If another employer can basically say, hey, we're going to make this plan, and we're going to force people to go on to the rich plans, state plans, large employers, then the large employer is picking up a greater share than what the rest of the business community or the employer community is looking at. So these are the two on participation rate. The med claims and RX claims are good, so we put that as a zero for savings opportunity right now, because this is all relative to the benchmark. Whether or not you want to be at the benchmark is a different story. Plan cost share, contribution share, it's what we talked about, about 2 million, 1.76 million for the contribution share. There's a million-dollar interaction effect, which means that the total savings opportunity, if we were to move everything to the benchmark, everything to the benchmark, would be just about $6 million based on this. Whether that's realistic, that's another story. Whether it's going to match your, your, your mission, your culture, that's again, part of the conversation that, you know, Tina and Scott and Jamie and Mandy and our team are going to have. But this gives us a starting point. So when we went through this, one of the items, you know, we can come in here and just say, here are the numbers, see you later. We don't want to do that. We want to come in and say, how, how do we address some of this stuff? So in the very cutesy titled slide of Mind Your Ps and Qs, this is really what healthcare is all about. Cost is a byproduct, it is an equation. It's a byproduct of price of service times quantity of that service. And within that equation is a bunch of nuance that we can feel, that we feel that we can address and address really, really well. So in terms of price, right now, price is good. Price per, per instance, per claim is good, it's in your advantage. So if your total cost is at the benchmark, and price relative to other industries and other organizations and other plans are good, because you're on a, you know, HMO fully insured plan with a hospital or system-owned provider, that's good. But there's still ways to improve it. Some of the things that we can talk about in improving this, that we're going to explore, are optimizing or potentially utilizing a onsite clinic or near-site clinic. It's a way to drive down costs per episode. Helping people purchase the right plan. One of the things that we've noticed is that when people are offered a choice and educated on that choice, many people will self-select a higher deductible, so because that means more money in their own paycheck. Technology moving towards telemedicine, that's a big thing too. If you can take a, you know, one of the big hurdles is, if I'm on an HSA plan and I have to go to my doctor, it's going to cost me $300. Well, telemedicine may cost you 40. So how can we interact some of these items? That's a big thing. The quantity is, is another, is another topic too. One of the universal issues that we're talking about is wellness within a population. One of the stats I like to throw out a lot is, 75% of every claim in this country, if you include private plans and Medicare, are related to a chronic condition. Chronic condition being, you know, hypertension, heart disease, diabetes, COPD, asthma. 75% of claims have a start or related to one of those chronic conditions, and 70% of those claims are lifestyle-related. So it's not just affecting some plans, it's affecting all plans. So how do we focus on the wellness of the population? Get people engaged in their own health and really address, not, you know, not, not a way to target individuals, but help those individuals who may need help with lifestyle-related issues. Two, we've talked on this three times, number of dependents. That's a, that is a, that is a big item. And one of the things that we find is, even on fully insured items or plans like this, and even after the ACA has allowed, you know, children to age 26 to stay on plans, we're still finding about 5% to 7% of all dependents on any plan, any given plan, 5% to 7% of those dependents are not eligible based on the plan document. So you're provided a plan document, it says what the eligibility is. And it may be things like, you know, this is a, you know, a, a, a grandchild. Or this may be, that's not covered. This may be a, you know, a spouse, if two people got divorced, and in the decree, it says you have to provide coverage to the children, and you never take the children off? You know, or they're based on, you know, and they're covered under somebody else's plan or dependents. So there's a variety of ways in which this happens. But in a lot of cases, there are people, and be willing to say that there's probably a handful of people on the dependents on the plan now, that are not eligible per the plan document. And there's good on both sides about addressing that. There's good on the employer's side about addressing that for, you know, a cost basis. But there's also good on the actual person's side, because one of the things that happens is, God forbid, a, a claim hits one of these children. And the insurance company looks and they say, well, it's a dependent, let's verify eligibility. And they try and they look to verify the eligibility, and they say, whoa, this million-dollar claim, lo and behold, they're not eligible, we don't have to pay this. Now all of a sudden, it's a non-covered claim, and it's a huge claim. So getting ahead of that, getting in front of that is, I think, an important thing for, you know, for employers to really look at. Quantity, another thing that affects quantity is the richness of the plan. When people have it, they tend to use it. It's not saying to take it away, it's just a conversation piece to it. And then again, number of employees that are taking the plan. All of those lead to quantity. And quantity times the price equals what your cost is. And quantity is, is one of the things that we want to, we want to look at and dig deeper into.
And Matt, we have about two minutes left.
Okay.
We don't want to open up the questions.
Yeah.
There's some strategies in here that we put in the back that we're going to take your, your team through. There's, from the information you see, if there's questions or thoughts that you have, I think it'd be good to get some of the things you're feeling.
Yeah, the rest of the, the rest of the presentation really just shows, hey, here are some strategies. Some may work, some may not for, for each of the metrics, but open it up to questions, absolutely.
I have one. So can you just explain that onsite clinic thing again, just how that would lower the price? Just so, because I'm like envisioning like a hospital here, which is not obviously the case, but what do you mean by onsite clinic and how could that lower the price?
Yeah. Dean wants to take that one.
All right, I think I turned it on. So what we look at, in a clinic model, when you own the clinic, you have the equity in the ownership of the clinic. and the people report to you and the outcomes to you. So, in its most basic sense, what we look at is if somebody has an employer that's 500 employees in a single community or greater, there is a really good likelihood that you having your own clinic is going to serve the primary care needs of your constituents at a lower cost and a better outcome. So if you think about primary care, it's really tough to get into. If you've ever had a kid that's got an earache at the middle of the night and you get, like, it's like four weeks and they're finally over it, right? Then you finally got to the doctor. Those sorts of primary care episodes. The other thing is, Matt said, is we can attack the lifestyle-related diseases as a benefit to the employees of the district and their dependents. And then the final one that comes with, and this is a byproduct of it, is occupational health. So if you have any workplace injuries or situations, you can provide some of your own triage in those. It's a, and what we find out in schools, it's really good, because most of you already have nurses. You have protocol in place on how to handle sickness and disease inside. So, it's an easier add for you than it is for any employer, because you're already doing it. So what we see, it's about 40 cents on the dollar. And the investment is, the clinic will be profitable for you in three years after you look at the investment. And then, every year thereafter, it's a really significant impactful opportunity for you. But it's something that we have a strength in looking at. And then, you go back and you use that against the primary care community and say, do you guys want to keep that primary care? Then, let's have a conversation on the cost.
Do you have any examples of districts in the state that are doing that now?
Appleton School District is the most recent one that if you look at, that there's feasibility. But there's probably, you know, there's probably 2025 districts that I think are doing it the right way. Some are just looking to partner. And the partner doesn't help, right? The owning the resources is what really helps. Because when they respond to you versus you just letting somebody, Mercy or Dean, have a space in, they're sending it into their systems. So, that's what we really try to see, is what are the referral patterns? What's the pattern of care that we need to go at? So, but there's a number of them out there. And we can, when we go through it, we'll give you some people that you can talk to.
Mr. Pennington?
Just to follow up with Ben's question, about four years ago, I went to Beloit, they had one. They took a building that was right across the street from their high school, down a block or two, and they had it in their own clinic onsite. It was kind of nice for them, because it wasn't in part of a regular building. So there was a little more privacy going there, and they also had like a back door to go into. So, I'm not sure if they still have it in Beloit, but at least they did, they did four years ago. So there was one close, anyway.
Yeah, I think they removed it this year, but for different reasons. In the past, we have talked about health plan cost, health plan contribution as things to address. And obviously, you're looking at a whole gamut of things. When we talk about having rich plans to help retain, recruit and retain, are you able to generate for us information that verifies that? It appears, based on your charts, that we are far above the benchmark in a couple of those cases. Are you able to, and I don't mean tonight, but are you able to demonstrate for us what the break-even point, what the target number is we should be looking at? I don't think the board has an issue with being above the benchmark. But, when you're way above the benchmark, we're looking--
Yes, you're looking at degavets, what would you do to achieve some of that while still maintaining it? There's a combination of things that you do in it, but absolutely, we'll, as we go through it, we'll say, if this, then that.
Right.
And give you those. The other thing that you got to think about is what we want to do, what we like about your plan that Matt was going through, is your access to primary care is reasonable. You want to keep your barrier to care low. So a lot of people in the public sector, in the school district space has just been raising deductibles. And what you do is people take care of their kids' cell phone bills and mortgages before they go take care of themselves. Your plan doesn't inhibit someone from caring for themselves properly. So we want to keep that barrier to entry low, but then figure out how to share the expense more appropriately. So that's the big thing that will come with, is say, how do we make people take good care of themselves and not just give them more cost and raise deductibles, but actually get better outcomes?
Okay. There's another phenomenon that has been documented every year for the last at least 15 years. MetLife puts out a study, and it's a pretty cool grid. And it's got a, it's like, think of four grids and you have the accesses where it's people's perception of benefits and how well they're communicated, or value of benefits. So basically, what it comes out of is saying that a poor plan that's communicated well, it's got a higher perception through the employees than a great plan that's communicated poorly. So, part of, you know, the job of any benefits, you know, team is to help sell the benefits to the employees on why it's great. And not just look at a single item or look at the entire aspect of it. So, great communication does a long way in increasing just the perceived value of the benefits.
I'm really enjoying the information that you're giving us. The information is easy to understand and it's straightforward, and I appreciate that. It's transparent, and I'm crazy about that. I'm also a fan of telemedicine. I work for Rock County, and January 1st, we also have the opportunity, we are self-insured, but now we're going to have the opportunity for Teladoc. And I tell you what, I'm going to be taking advantage of that. I know when I have bronchitis, I know when I don't need to go in additionally because of my work schedule and all of the activities I have. I would not go to the ER, but I would go to urgent care, because that's when it was convenient for me to go. And I think that this is going to be a benefit. And it's probably going to have, I think it's going to have a huge impact. Can you verify that? I mean, from your experience, is this something that's going to make a big impact and going to help save quite a bit of money?
When it's rolled out properly and it's educated properly. And, there is a, you know, we can get a, like a sliding scale going and saying, we get this many, you know, visits, this much utilization, and it prevents, like you said, visits to the ER or urgent care or what have you. Then, it's a very easy calculation to go and say, average primary care, you know, visit or average urgent care visit, $250. That goes towards your medical loss ratio. This is a flat $40, and it's just a quick, you know, multiplication. Telemedicine becomes far more impactful when there is a, some sort of self-insured element. Whether the, like you said, Rock County is entirely self-insured, uses the alliance. But even with a higher deductible that maybe you insured underneath it, that's another way where it's an easier dollar-for-dollar transaction as opposed to going into the void of the insurance company.
The other thing is, where are most sick people? In clinics and hospitals, right? So by virtual medicine, you don't have to go to expose yourself to those situations. So, another byproduct is you're actually in a better environment to take care of yourself, because you're in the confines of a place where there's not a lot of other people with multiple diseases, right? So if you think about it, what we look at doing is trying to work out when you're in a fully insured situation to say, the average cost of a primary care visit right now is roughly around $185. Matt said, it's about 40 bucks for telemedicine. Is there a way that we can negotiate with the current fully insured carrier to give you some benefit for using virtual technology to be able to treat your people more effectively and more efficiently? So that's on us, and then as we get agreements, then we can show you how many visits you have to have. The education piece is important too, because a lot of people want to use the virtual medicine when they're sick. And if you haven't signed up, and, you know, because when you go to the clinic, before they see you, they say, can I have your card? Can I have all your information? Maybe can you even tell me about your family, right? So, you got to do all of that beforehand. So what we will do when we do a good virtual enrollment is educate people and get them to sign up when you're telling them about the benefits. So when they actually are sick, they don't have to wait in that virtual waiting room. They can get right in there to be seen.
Well, here's something else that I recently learned. And here's where the education piece, you know, for the consumers is going to be, you know, a great option. When you go in to your physician or a physician and you have a specific need and you're asked, do you have, is there anything else you'd like to talk about, or is there something else going on? You're also built for that issue as well.
Yeah, my knee hurts. Oh, now it's a diagnostic claim, yeah.
So, these are education pieces that are important. Also, I don't remember how many years ago Rock County went through the process of, what we'll call weeding out the non-eligible dependents. And, as it turns out, and because I'm the president of our union, I'm privy to these conversations that there were people who've been divorced for many years and we're still on the plan. And so, there was an additional, I mean, there's, you know, things that you can do in the beginning, and I'm really liking what I'm hearing from you. So these are, like, common sense things, or, you know, I appreciate that, so thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Ben, did you have other questions? So, talk to us about next steps. Obviously, what we're used to doing is, we're used to moving into negotiations, we're looking at things like that. I guess what we're going to be asking is, when you work with the leadership team for the recommendations, as you may or may not know, we are working on a new salary structure for a good part of our staff. Where this falls is obviously part of a compensation plan, salaries, wages and benefits. And as you pointed out in this document, it's a balancing act. So, give us a timeline, when you think you'll be getting information back to Superintendent Poofall and the staff on where we go next.
So, we've been in communication, have met in person with both Dean Care and Mercy Care to discuss our expectations, as well as timeline, knowing that it is, you know, May is going to be upon us before we know it. It's not even Christmas yet, but we're just saying that. They have agreed and promised to have the renewals in our hands by, Dean said mid-January, and I want to say that Mercy Bill, you can correct me on this, said early February is when they said they would have the renewals to us. You know, the good news is based on the things that we're seeing here. Looking at, you know, an Anthem or UHC is probably not a, you know, time well spent on here. But we've had a couple, we have a couple ideas to help, even in worst-case scenario, that would benefit and soften the renewal. So that we want to maintain, really the goal is to maintain as-is for the next three years or so while we're building and ready to really start implementing potentially some changes or getting some ideas. So, our plan would be have documents, renewal numbers in your hands early to mid-February with already plans and alternatives set to go.
And then mining the additional information that you're looking at, people who shouldn't be on our insurance, et cetera, et cetera. It's an ongoing thing. Do you anticipate an update? Will there be any significant information available in the next 45 days? Or should we be waiting till mid-late February for the next time to take a look at the benefits piece?
There will be some, you know, there will be some other items. The dependent eligibility audit, one of the things that we call it, that is a, really, it is a four-to-six-month process.
Okay.
Because it is a softer approach, it does take some outreach, it's done by a third party. And there's plenty of opportunity given for individuals to find documentation needed in order to maintain or keep their dependence on the plan. That's one of those items that we're looking at. There's also marketing for some other, you know, items as we're going through. Next week, Tuesday, we have a call to discuss some of the non-medical lines and trying to find synergies with, you know, consolidation of carriers into non-medical lines, as well as talking about some technology pieces that would help out. Not just the non-medical pieces of it, but also the medical and the vision and the dental and, you know, compliance and all those items too. So, you know, we have a weekly call with the benefits team, just to make sure things are being moved appropriately. And then, thus far, what we've done is taken the lead from, you know, the team here on how information gets, you know, gets passed along.
Okay, and-- I feel comfortable that we're going to be able to deliver options to you for your consideration in February.
Okay.
We'll weigh in pretty heavy on what we think, based on the information that's out there. We'll have conducted the market search and have competitive information. That's always helpful, to have the competitive information, but then to put it in front of them, and we'll prioritize what we think the low-hanging fruit are, so that you can start to see, you know, that sort of options. And what we always try to do is, people think if I take option A, option B, and option C, then I get those three. And you saw Matt describe the interactive effect. You don't get all three impacts when you do all three of them. So we'll also quantify if you made a major step. So there'll be some, there'll be a lot of information that we're, every week, relaying to your team. But I'm confident in February, we'll have options for people to consider.
Okay, and Dean, I asked you early in your presentation before Matt joined us, professional development's a big part of what we do in this district. And are there pieces that we should be providing to our employees in January as a professional development piece, so that they're not feeling like they're not informed? That you could do through Tina and the staff? Just a regular update, because this is a transition time from carriers that they're used to having that's very, very visible and open and honest.
Yeah, we're talking about communication pieces, and your team is ahead of a lot of other people that we work with in district space, because you're very proactive. Most people wait till they make the decision, then they start to educate people. So yes, there'll be pieces all along. As we get the technology piece down, that makes touching people a little easier. You can get them on their time, but that's all going to be part of it. So if you're considering a high deductible, right? You got to have some education on what a high deductible health plan means, what people got to start to do. Those things are all in the works in terms of conversation.
Is there such a thing as a demo Teladoc that could be provided so that
Yes.
we could introduce that to staff in January as something we may be considering?
Well, funny enough, is one of the things that's already included with the premium that you pay both Dean and Mercy is a nurse line. And the nurse line does act as a quasi-telemedicine. Though you're not going to be talking to a, you know, an MD, you're going to be talking to a nurse who has access to your files. It's a free service, it has not been, under my understanding, communicated really with any oomph to the employees. But it is something that, through communication, in that scenario, I know I have, you know, bronchitis or an infection or something like that, or my child has this. To be able to talk to a professional and really weigh out, does it make sense to go to urgent care? You know, is it just water and maintain?
But I guess, what I'm asking you, Matt, is, can we plan for January, having something out there that staff can see that will generate the excitement that Carla has? I've used it myself. I think it's important for staff to see that and start to feel it's a shift from what you're used to. But a staff person shared with me earlier that sometimes it's hard to get information, they don't know where to go. So if this is a piece that's there and they didn't know was there, it's no one's fault but ours for not--
Yeah, most definitely. We can work with the team to prioritize which things have the most impact to them and schedule that calendar of education throughout the year, right? Lowest-impact things last, highest-impact things first, absolutely.
Because I think we're ready to start that, so.
Okay.
The other thing that's different, this committee does not meet unless we have an agenda that needs to have people here. And, so if there are things that you need to share through Tina in a written form, then we'd understand by reading it. We don't necessarily need you face-to-face in front of us. We prefer to do it that way, so if action is in February, we probably wouldn't be meeting till February.
Yeah, we can use executive summaries to work through the team to get to you.
That's helpful.
Okay.
Other questions from the committee for these gentlemen? Well, great job, we appreciate it. Did you have anything else, Keith? We appreciate that, and we'd like you to stay, if you don't mind, and listen to the rest of the, the rest of the meeting's not very long, but there are things that are tangential to what you're working on, so it'd be great if you wanted to stay.
Yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a sick leave discussion that Commissioner Dobson brought forth as an agenda item. So, the floor is yours, and I'm sure Scott will help you with this.
Yeah, I think I initially brought this forward when just kind of thinking about how sick time is directly connected to OPEB right now, that that has kind of concerned me for some time now that staff may be hesitant to take off because of that connection. And now, interestingly enough, I'm just reading through this comparison update that I got now. Even towards the bottom, it says that there's only two districts that were looked at that tie sick time to OPEB benefits. And actually, it looks like one of those districts has actually phased that-- And actually, it looks like one of those districts has actually phased that out at this point, not tying that. So I really just wanted to start the discussion or when the last time sick time was looked at and how that's accrued and how that benefit works, so.
Thank you. And we have our trustee Jamie and Mandy here tonight to help us out, but they've been doing a lot of our research. With with regards to your question, Commissioner Dobson, prior to 2015, and actually Act 10, sick days and all of that was negotiated and that started right around 1998-ish. I contacted our previous manager of employee benefits. In March of 2015, if you look at the board minutes and I may have to defer to Mandy, but it was quite the discussion. There was a motion, if you remember, option, there's two different options to add sick days or remove sick days for OPEB benefit. And there was quite a discussion. We had a motion on the floor, then it was rescinded, and then it was, there was another motion made. So essentially, what what you have there was a battle amongst board members as to how to proceed.
What date was that?
That was March 24th of 2015. And so when when
Just checking.
Yeah. So so during that
I remember most battles.
Right. Well, during that discussion, and I was, I've gone through the minutes several times just to try to keep track, but essentially, the board members were really struggling with, do we tie sick time to OPEB? And in the end, they did. They voted to keep that as is. And Mandy, if you have anything more specific to add, that's a quick summary of what we found.
The only thing that I would add is after reviewing the board minutes as well as revisions to the employee handbook, it appears as though the change in the sick time that was allocated to employees was all part of this. So it wasn't two separate discussions necessarily as far as OPEB versus sick time, it was all one grouping that change was.
So I guess I really don't know where to go from here, like what the next step would be, but I would still, I would like to continue the discussion and have this as a future agenda item to look at that sick time again and that connection, because I think it is a newer board now. I'm sure some of them were on the board back in 2015, obviously, but to at least start that discussion again and at least see why that decision was made and what other options may be available instead of connecting that sick time to the OPEB, which continues just to kind of baffle me that we're all about health and wellness, but yet we tie sick time to OPEB. And again, that may dissuade people from taking off when they're sick or when their kids are sick. So so I guess, Steve, I would have to ask you what the next step would be.
So do you have two questions? One is, why is it tied to sick, why sick days, why are sick days tied to OPEB? And do you want to look at how the sick day allocation is currently in the employee handbook? Because that was another
Yeah, I would say that's accurate, yeah. I mean, definitely how it's accrued would be the first one and then the second would be options outside of the sick time being tied to OPEB. What else would work? So, yeah, so two separate ones.
Because at one point, there was a cap of 130 days or 120 days.
Correct.
And that was removed, so now the cap is gone, which is also unique to this district. And the reason I ask this, the our benefits specialists to stay is because I suspect they probably have some background with other districts that might be able to help us with some of that information. But other questions from, okay, so we will, we'll be bringing those forward. The the next agenda item kind of aligns with that, which was 1.4 other post-employment benefits. That's a continuation of the presentation that Tina had done with us, which was all the pretty paper. And one of the questions that came out of that was, we currently offer separation benefits for people who resign prior to retirement? So that's if someone works here 10 years, they earn a paid stipend and they can leave and go to another district, but we're paying them to leave, basically. So I would ask, any, do you have any feedback on that, Scott, as to why that's there and?
That that was, again, a negotiated item years ago. I don't have feedback particularly on that other than that's what has been negotiated and stayed in place. The board has not considered other options since its inception.
The feedback I've seen since that presentation is millennials don't, it used to be that people stayed in jobs for 30 years and they stayed through the retirement and they used that benefit. Millennials are more willing to move.
Correct.
So basically, we're taking, giving money away to people who are leaving after they're here 10 years, some of the best peopleness sometimes. So I'd like us to look at that and is that where we should be going when we're looking at the other things? And I would ask administration, maybe bring a recommendation back to us, as to what they think we should be doing with all of these pieces.
Absolutely. Just a clarification on Commissioner Dobson's request, I want to make sure I have it right. You had mentioned you want to know how sick days are accrued and then you also want us to look at other options or what other districts are doing with regards to sick days and yeah.
I'm not even entirely sure I know what I necessarily am asking. It's just
All right. I'm glad I'm asking.
So, yeah, so I don't expect you to know necessarily, but so more of just a general inquiry is, again, what other options would have existed in the past when sick time was not tied to it and how that whole discussion looked in 2015, which I'm sure I could look through the minutes and probably get some information from it, but but why that decision was made and then maybe why these other districts on here are choosing not to do that and why the districts are going away from that and what they're using instead, I guess. I would like to see that, so especially the district that recently phased it out and if only two of the nine, now one of the nine. And then definitely how sick time is accrued currently, how it was in the past, and maybe a recommendation on ways to incentivize that sick time again, if it's going to continue to be tied to OPEB, how we could potentially, I don't know, accrue it quicker, I guess. So people may use it when they need it.
Okay.
So if you can figure that out, Scott, thank you.
I'll rewatch the video.
And it's not called sick time, it's called paid leave time, right?
Yeah, well, we have designation. It is, we do have some sick time in there, yeah. It is designated.
The the critical timing for this really is, Mr. Pennington brought up at our last board meeting, that we're, we're looking at a modified or a version of zero-based budgeting. And when you look at salaries of employees, in the past, for the last 30 years, we've looked at salaries and benefits together because it is a cost of business. So it, the timing is good for us to look at, what should we invest in salaries and benefits? And sick leave is a benefit, paid time off is a benefit, all of those things. So we, I guess we're asking the administration to come back with, what should that picture look like for us as we move forward with the new information we're going to receive from our benefits consultants in February? I think it's better for this committee to look at a holistic approach and bring that to the board. So I'm asking that your leadership team work with whatever resources you need to come with a recommendation for us. And even if it's a preliminary recommendation, rather than Ben reading all the documents and Carla reading all the documents and I read the documents and we all come up with our own versions, frankly, that's why we have you people working for us.
That's why we do it, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, I think that's using you to our advantage and and we only, as Keith says to us 100 million times or 170 million times, we only have so many dollars.
That's correct.
So the question came up loud and cleared it from several people as to, so you're paying people, some of your best people, you're investing all of your money in the front, upfront costs, which is training employees in their first three to five years. They stay 10 years, they leave, another district poaches them for $7,000 signing bonus and they take with them a benefit? They said, could you explain that to me? And I said, I can't. I can't. I don't know how it happened. So it was part of a negotiation, is what I was told.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it was wrong at the time, but I think we have to look holistically at the cost of benefits, so.
All right.
Other questions for the committee? From the committee? Jimmy, you've been awful quiet.
Yeah.
Did you lose your voice or you get ready to sing White Christmas?
Yeah.
No, all right, all right. If Tina were here, we'd put her on the spot. Other items, anything else you gentlemen would like to share before we adjourn? All right, we've reached the end of our meeting, we are adjourned.